It's eleven after ten, we have three council members, we need seven for a quorum. It progressed to ten sixteen, and we have four council members present, six needed for a quorum. Okay, we have six, now we need four for a quorum. Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Holden, Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Wax, Mr. Walters. All right, it is ten eighteen, and we now have a quorum, although we are still expecting Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Holden, and Mr. Wax. So let us begin. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Tuesday, November 7th, 2000. Council meets on Monday, on Tuesday, it feels like Monday, on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, at more or less ten o'clock. We are being viewed on Channel 35, we're also available by council phone, and I think we'll start by calling the roll.
Bernsen, Cech, Fuhrer, Goldberg, Glanter, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Orange, Wax, Walters, Faro, Timbers, President, and Quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. We're going to, this being the relevant day of the month, we're going to hear first from Rabbi Mark Diamond, who is Executive Vice President of the Board of Rabbis of Southern California for the invocation. Rabbi.
Thank you very much, and thank you for inviting me to speak with you. You can sit down, please, don't stand up for this. Okay? Thank you for inviting me to speak with you this morning, and thank you for the special honor of opening your meeting on this day, the first Tuesday of November. I must confess that mine is a conflicted soul on Election Day. As a native son of Chicago, reared on Cook County politics, there was a little voice inside me which says, "Vote early and vote often." However, as a law-abiding citizen, I promised to do my best to stifle that impulse. Friends, I must also confess that invocations are not standard fair in my own Jewish tradition. In lieu of invoking God's name, I prefer to share a brief devar torah, a few thoughts based on Scripture. This past Saturday morning in synagogue, Jewish people read the famous narrative about Noah and his ark. The Hebrew text of Genesis, Chapter 6, Verse 16, tells us that God commands Noah, "T'sohar ta'aseh la'teva," make an opening for daylight in the ark, according to one modern translation. Another one reads, "A skylight you are to make for the ark." Now friends, the Hebrew text is a bit obscure. This t'sohar may well have been a window or a skylight which allowed light to enter the ark. There is a rabbinic legend which relates that the t'sohar was not an opening, but rather a precious stone that illuminated the whole interior of the ark. But whatever the t'sohar was, it certainly brought light into a dark place. My friends, we live together in an ark called Los Angeles. There are times, too many times, when life in our community is less than angelic. Our ark suffers from the darkness of hunger and homelessness, pain and violence. It is an ark plagued by the darkness of apathy, insensitivity, indifference to the needs of others. And yet, our ark is also filled with promise and hope for the future. It is an ark of precious resources, a community blessed with great natural beauty. It is an ark of precious people, God's children, who know how to get along with each other and to help one another. It is an ark of precious jewels, leaders with the wisdom, the courage, and the foresight to strengthen and uplift the people of this great city. So friends, let us try to fulfill our mandate, our mandate to feed the hungry, to clothe the naked, to shelter the homeless. Let's work together to try to make this a true city of angels. May our words and our deeds brighten the ark of Los Angeles. Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi. All right. Mr. Clerk, I've been asked to take item thirty out of order, so we're going to do item thirty first, and recognize Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the council, item thirty looks like a fairly innocuous item, and it is. It just says we're transmitting data to LAFCO, and it's a communication from Oars. The reason I wanted to call it special and bring it to your attention is the following. On June 21st, LAFCO submitted to the city a series of questions for response in relation to the harbor and the valley secession studies. A second set of questions was given to us by LAFCO in August. Those questions involved 764 individual tasks that were referred to various departments throughout the city. And I'd like to take this time to commend the city departments for the impressive job that they've done in getting the answer to all of these questions, some very complicated, in a very timely manner, while also continuing their everyday workloads. To date, the city has spent $414,000 in answering these questions. It's also important to recognize the amazing coordination provided in this effort by the Office of Administrative Research Services, and in particular Ellen Sand, who is here, David Hirono, and David Luther. I'd also like to thank the general managers of each department who were supportive in this monumental effort to gather data and provide that information to LAFCO. Members of the council, what you see before you in these boxes is just today's transmittal. This is what item thirty is about, transmitting this data, which is just a small fraction of the entirety of the data that has been submitted to LAFCO and its consultants. As part of this process, the city has compiled information regarding every facet of the city infrastructure, services, personnel, assets, property, detailed descriptions of how every department functions, a complete accounting of general fund and grant revenues and expenditures, and much of this information is broken down by geographic area or a census tract. In short, this is the most thorough investigation and inventory that the city has ever conducted. Members of the council, we are on the precipice of the singularly most important event that ever may have happened in this city. LAFCO and its consultants now take this data and determine the feasibility of the breakup of the city of Los Angeles and the viability of any entities that would be created. They will be doing their work for the next year, and this next year will bring us most interesting developments, and hopefully information that we will share with all of our citizens about how our city functions and how we provide services to our residents. Where we go from here is really not known, never has a separation of the city of this size been attempted. But to that end, I am here today just to share with you these transmittals, ask for the approval of this action, and with all sincerity, thank the members of the city's staff and teams who led this to help us assemble this amazing compilation of data about who we are, how our city functions, and to give that for review. All of this is available on Internet, is available at LAFCO, and for those who really want to take the time to go through it all, this is how our city works.
Thank you. Mr. Bernsen.
Yes, I just want to take a moment to thank the city staff who worked so diligently on this and the committee for preparing this information. As your representative on LAFCO, you can understand that this is a monumental period in our history, the history of the city of Los Angeles, and also you can appreciate the monumental task that LAFCO has in going through this material and making determinations that have never been made before, and we are basically creating new history today. But I want to commend the city for its prompt compliance, because there was some question, and people said, "Well, they're going to stall," and all that. That's not been the case. The information has been forthcoming, it's been forthcoming in a timely fashion, and I want to commend everybody who's involved in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for your good work. I guess we need to open the roll on item thirty, close the roll, debilitate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And that is unanimously approved, closing one chapter and opening another one. All right, moving right along.
Approval of the minutes.
Let's do that. Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And those two.
Before getting to the regular agenda, there are several items requested to be continued. Item number twenty requests that that matter be continued till November 14th.
All right, is there any objection to continuing item twenty? Seeing none, it's continued.
Item twenty-one, a request by the Los Angeles Housing Department and CDA to continue that matter till November 14th.
Anybody have any problem with that? Okay, I'm seeing none, it's... Mr. Ridley, Thomas, you have a problem? There are no cards here on item twenty... I have cards on twenty and on twenty-two, but not on twenty-one.
I think we're all right. Madam President, I'm a bit ahead of the curve, I think. That's twenty-four and twenty-seven that I think we need to deal with.
All right, we have cards on twenty-four, but not on twenty-seven.
Contrary to... contrary to what Mr. Pacheco might think.
Yeah, all right. In that case, item twenty-one is also continued to November 14th.
Item number twenty-two requests that matter be continued till January 9th, 2001.
All right, we do have a card on that one. All right, is there any objection, council members, to continuing item twenty-two to January 9th? Seeing none, well...
It's at the request of Los Angeles Housing Department and Council District 10.
Okay, all right, no objection, item twenty-two is continued to January 9th.
And items number twenty-four through twenty-seven, a request by Mr. Ridley Thomas to continue those matters two weeks until November 21st.
All right, now we do have cards, Mr. Ridley Thomas, we have cards on twenty-four and twenty-five.
If the... Madam President, with your permission, those who wish to be heard, I think ought to be afforded that opportunity, but we will continue this pursuant to the recommendation of the city attorney's office.
All right, so for those of you who have submitted cards, we're going to, I'll call it special, in case you want to be heard today, but we're going to continue the items to...
November 21st.
November 21st. So if you would rather be heard on November 21st, you don't have to stick around. That's up to you. Okay.
Madam Chair, item twenty-eight and twenty-nine, I just want to hold on, I don't want to take any action until my staff gets a chance to talk to the Housing Department today.
Okay, we're not even close to those yet. So why don't you let me know when we get to them, we'll come back.
I just saw you calling twenty-four and twenty-five special.
Yeah, no, 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 we're just trying to do housekeeping here. Okay.
Item number thirty-seven F, a request from the city attorney to continue that matter one day until November 8th.
All right, item thirty-seven is continued one day.
Thirty-seven F.
Thirty-seven F.
That's a closed session item.
No such luck, I thought it was the whole thing. Okay.
Now onto the regular agenda. Items number one through three are items noticed for public hearing.
All right, I do not have any cards on those. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to be heard on one through three? Seeing none, the public hearings are closed, and the matters are now before us. The first two, my notes say to continue the hearing open.
Continue the hearing ordinance till November 28th.
All right, so the public hearing on item three is closed. The other two are open and will continue the hearings and the ordinances on both one and two to November 28th. And item three, we've closed the hearing, can we take a vote on that? All right, let's take a vote. All right, let's take a vote on all three. Then why are we continuing the hearing?
The municipal code indicates that you have to have a hearing held on one date, and then close that hearing, and then reopen it two weeks later.
So you do want me to close the hearings on Item 1?
On today, yes.
All right, so we're closing the hearings on Items 1 and 2 as well. And it's okay to vote, even though we're going to have another hearing?
Yeah, we'll come back.
All right. Open the roll on Items 1, 2, and 3. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are all approved.
Items number 4 through 13 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held.
All right, I have one card on Number 11, but we have already held... Actually, I have two cards now on Item 11. But we've already held hearings, so unless I hear a motion to hold another hearing, we're going to see if the Councilmembers have any specials.
I'd like to call Item 7 special.
All right, Item 7 is called special by Mr. Hernandez. Anybody else, 4 through 13?
Yes, I just want to move 12A, which is the implementing of 12 that was unanimously adopted by the Personnel Committee.
Okay. Anybody else, 4 through 13?
And Item 8...
Also?
Well, yeah, well, no, I don't want to call it special. I'd like to receive and file the request for an extension.
Okay.
And if I could make an announcement real quick.
Please.
The reason we're receiving and filing Item Number 8 is because the mayor has offered the position to Lillian Kawasaki to take over as department head.
The permanent.
That permanent position, and she has accepted that position. And so we need to receive and file what's before us. I just thought the Council would like to know of that appointment by the mayor's office, and congratulate Lillian for that appointment.
So we don't have to... There will be... It's a seamless transition from the end of this contract to the permanent appointment?
Right.
Okay.
So Lillian has been appointed to...
So, yes, actually, I knew that. But I appreciate you telling everybody else.
Well, Ms. Chick didn't know, so I'm glad.
So the motion is to receive and file Item 8. Mr. Fuhr?
Regarding items that are special, have you gotten to Item 11 yet, Madam President?
No, Item 11, I do have a card, and I have been told there's going to be a move to continue Item 11.
Fine.
So shall we... Let's... Well, let's call it special for the moment, and then when...
Okay.
We'll just call it special for the moment, and then...
I only want a special so I could recuse myself.
Oh, okay. All right, so Item 11 is called special.
Okay.
Okay.
And, Madam Chair, are we on Item 28 and 29 now?
No. Sit tight.
Okay.
We're still on 4 through 13. We have... We've called Item 7 special. The motion on Item 8 is to receive and file. And the motion on... We called 11 special, and the motion on 12 is to adopt 12A, so...
And 16 goes with 11, so...
Yes, I know it does, but I'm not up to that yet, so hang on. So, open the roll... No, Members of the Council, anybody have any more comments on any of the remaining items? Seeing none, open the roll on Items 4, 5, 6...
Madam President, 16, please.
We're not up to 16.
Oh.
4, 5, 6, 8, as amended, to receive and file, 9, 10, 12A, and 13. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are all approved.
Fourth with on 12.
As amended, fourth with on 12. Okay, so... Now, Mr. Clerk, what's up next?
Items number 14 through 36 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items number 20 through 22 have been acted on.
Okay, now...
And 30.
And 30, right.
We're holding Items 24 through 27 on the desk for Mr. Ridley Thomas.
24 through 27, and why are... Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Yes, sir.
Why are we holding 24 through 27?
There was some question asked to whether they wanted to testify. They will not. They'll wait till the 21st. We may then proceed, Madam President.
Okay, so we will not hold those. So we now have Items 14 through 29... No, through 30...
14 through 36, with the exceptions of 20, 21, 22, and 30. I believe there's a card on Item 14.
Well, there's a card on 14, there's cards on 11 and 16, cards on 18, 19... Yeah, 18 and 19.
Yeah.
So let's call those...
Yeah, Madam Chair, now I can talk on Item 28 and 29. We did talk to the Housing Department. We'd like to ask for those to be continued till the 21st also.
All right, so Items 28 and 29 will be continued to November 21st.
Madam President, 16 and 35 special, please.
Okay, I'm getting to you. Hold on. 16, Mr. Padilla calls 16 and 35 special. Any other specials?
34.
34. Ms. Chick calls 34 special. Pick a card, any card. Okay, so we are going to have special now. 14, because we have a card, 16, which is tied to 11, 18 and 19, and then 34 and 35. So, anybody have anything to say on any of the others? All right. Open the roll then on Items 15, 17, 23, 31, 32, 33, and 36. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, those are approved.
Fourth with on 33, please.
Fourth with on 33. Next item.
Item number 38 on supplemental agenda is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay, Item 38. Members of the Council?
We do think we got it.
Nobody wishes to be heard? Open the roll on Item 38.
I press my button, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry? So you did. Go ahead. Item 38.
This is the one we wanted Councilman Zickowski to be present, and I asked Mr. Deaton, who's busy talking to another person, if he could... Notice, I didn't say who you're talking to. I wanted to keep your credibility intact. But, Mr. Deaton, this is the law enforcement block grant issue, and part of the reason I had called it, asked for continuance, was we didn't want to get caught in the same situation we did last year. And it's because you have the block grant fiscal year, which is different from the Council's budgetary fiscal year. And what was represented on this block grant were expenditures through September of 2001. Now, staff is telling me, and again, Mr. Thompson can't be here because of... He's excused. But the reality is, I just want to make sure that we, as a Council, would be able to discuss the priorities for the spending of that block grant as part of our process. And I just needed... Okay, Mr. Deaton has requested we put it on the desk. Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Zickowski? No? And you don't want to speak on this one?
On this side.
You want to speak on different... So we're leaving it alone, or we're putting it over?
On the desk.
All right, hold Item 38 on the desk.
Madam President?
Wait a second. We got a... No, you're right. Okay, Mr. Padilla.
You can swallow.
Yeah, I know, these are hard.
Item 36, Madam President, I request that we reconsider, and I ask for one week continuance. I do have a meeting on that project with the developer later on this week.
Okay, is there any problem with reconsidering Item 36? Open the roll on reconsidering. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Item 6 is reconsidered, and you would like it continued until?
One week.
For one week.
Thank you. That's November 14th.
Geez. How did it get to be November already? All right, moving right along.
Item number 39, also on the supplemental agenda, is an item for which public hearing has not been held.
Anybody wish to be heard on Item 39?
On it.
Members of the Council? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next.
The next item is Item Number 7, called special by Councilmember Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez, where are you?
We want this one to be handed in.
Okay, let's hold Item 7 on the desk for the moment, and that jumps us, I believe, to...
To Item Number 11. I believe Mr. Fuhr wants to be excused.
All right, Mr. Fuhr, Item 11, Mr. Fuhr is leaving. Take note. Now, Item 11 and 16 are linked. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, Item 11 and Item 16 are linked. You heard that we will be requesting a continuance. There has been a substitute motion that I introduced that's on the desk, stamped 11A, and I would want to formally move that as a substitute for the committee report in Item 11, the majority committee report. But I understand that now that we're working also with the FCC, that Councilmember Holden requests a consideration of this item in his committee. So I would agree to that on an understanding and commitment that it be agendized back in Council for the 21st of this month.
Take it up to the next meeting.
Are we talking about 11 and 16, or...
11.
Just 11? All right, so with that understanding, Item 11, with the amending motion, 11A will be referred to Mr. Holden's Intergovernmental Relations Committee. Substitute. Yeah, but we're sending that and the original committee report to Mr. Holden's committee. Okay, that's Item 11. Will somebody go tell Mr. Fuhr?
And for technical matter, then 16 is then continued to the 21st, so it all comes back together for the council meeting on the 21st.
Good idea. So we're going to continue Item 16 to the 21st with the anticipation that both 11 and 16 will be back before us at that time. The agenda is just falling away here.
Madam President?
Sorry, Ms. Zickowski?
Item 38, which we held on the desk, I think has been resolved between Mr. Hernandez and myself with the local law enforcement block grant staff. And this is not providing in any way any commitment to next year's process, where we will look at the budget and make other priorities and determinations other than the way we've spent it in the past. And we've gotten that commitment from both the law enforcement block grant staff, as well as the city legislative analysts, that we will begin anew how we want to spend this and our priorities with our next year's budget.
And therefore, we ought to go ahead and approve this?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez, are you okay with that? Just so I don't get caught up...
We need clarification.
Yes? All right. Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Those concerns that were rather carefully articulated, not last week when you weren't here, Ms. Zickowski, but maybe two or three weeks ago, when we found that we had committed ourselves to something unwittingly, how is it that we are stipulating that that will not happen so that we are not locked into commitments that are non-negotiable?
Because right now, the expenditure plan that we're submitting goes through October of this year. This next year, we're going to be basically discussing. But it's a three-year funding cycle, which is why we're submitting the request. And we've served notice, I think, on the mayor's office, the city attorney's office, as well as our committee, that this year's priorities will be discussed with the Council. And we're not basically...
What's the process for that? I mean, that's really the question.
Well, and I think it'll be part of our entire dialogue as the overall budget discussion and how the block grant can be used.
Well, it seems preliminary to that, Mr. Hernandez. We need a way for us to give input into that specific thing, because you know that that's been getting by us.
Right, and there's an advisory committee in which Councilmember Zickowski chairs, and I'm a part of...
Madam President, it's very difficult to hear.
That we have said, we...
Wait, hold on. It's still very difficult to hear. Can we...
Are the sergeants here today? Are the sergeants here today? Are they out voting for...
If they're voting the right way, we don't care.
All right, take your time then.
Last year, I believe that the advisory committee was... At least the councilmembers who sit on that advisory committee were not part of that process.
Well, that's what I'm getting to.
And this year, we're definitely part of that process. And I think we've served notice that we're going to be part of that process.
Who initiates that?
We initiate it by way of our budget process, because that's where we have had the problem in the past. Our budget process comes through, and we aren't aware that part of our grant allocation on the block grant in the budget process is already predetermined. So this motion actually says we start a new process, and I would just like to amend that item that's on today.
All right.
And say that where the mayor's office of Criminal Justice Planning report back to community and economic development and public safety to create new procedures be done prior to the consideration of the fiscal year budget for next year.
So now we're all clear, right?
Yep.
Okay. Open the roll on Item 38. Close the roll. Sorry? As amended, yes. Thank you. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved as amended. Next item. We were back, I think, on Item 18.
Item Number 14, I believe is a card.
Okay, Item 14, we have a request to be heard from... I can't read it. Mr. Larry... Well, he's an attorney. He'll figure it out. Must be you.
Yes, Miss Chairwoman, it's Larry Gutcho. G-U-T-C-H-O. Apologize for the handwriting.
It's okay. I got it. Thanks. Go ahead.
Ladies and gentlemen, our law firm, Loben Lob, represents the ownership of the parcel... The ownership of the property of which the parcel that you seek to condemn for the sewer interceptor project is a part of. And we are very, very concerned that the process in the city is oblivious to what is happening out in this area right now, which is that the high-tech revolution and the broadband and the need for space among many, many entities is making these properties much more desirable and much more valuable than they ever were. Properties such as the Seventh Street Warehouse offer tremendous amounts of space, tremendous amounts of openness, a design that can support very, very heavy floor loads, and they're not easily reproducible because of the absence of similar-located space in similar proximity to broadband communications. And the ownership is adamantly against this condemnation and believes that the city's proposed offer of compensation does not come close to reflecting the value of this property, and in particular, the damage that will inure to this property by virtue of the taking The ownership wants to make it crystal clear that it protests and does not consent to the proposed taking.
I think that's pretty clear. You've been quite straightforward about that.
I think I will limit my remarks to what I have gone through so far, and I'd like to thank this entire room for the courtesy and cooperation in quietly listening to this presentation.
I know how you feel. Okay, Item 14 is before us. Mr. Pacheco, did you want to make any comment? It's in your district.
I would simply say that this is part of a program to upgrade the sewer systems here in the City of Los Angeles, and that the department has presented why it's a public necessity to my office, and I'm not sure if we need to do that on the record at this point, but I would ask approval for the...
You are recommending approval. All right. Item 14 is before us. Members of the Council, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That's approved. Next item.
Item Number 18.
18. All right, we have one speaker on Item 18, Vanita Simone.
Madam President, I'm here before representing the owner of the property, asking for an extension to complete the necessary renovations on the property, and from my understanding, And from my understanding, there is an illegal unit there. We are working with attendants to relocate them to a new property and to demolish the illegal unit on the property.
Okay, thank you. Item eighteen. Right, is that where we are? All right, this is in Ms. Goldberg's district, item eighteen. The lady was asking for an extension. Let's hold that on the desk and move to--
Yes, please hold it on the desk. Let me check with my staff.
Yes, please. You might go check with the lady who just asked for the extension as well. We'll move then to--
Item nineteen.
Nineteen. For item nineteen, I have two people who wish to be heard. Bonifacio Mazas and Bulmaro Santiago, and, well, three people, Juana Climaco. She's gonna, we're holding item eighteen on the desk--
I'm also nineteen, too.
You're also nineteen, okay, go ahead.
For that one, all the work has been done. The Health Department and the systemic code enforcement have been contacted over two weeks ago in regards to going out for reinspection to take this off and close everything up. All renovations have been completed.
Okay, thank you. Let's hear from, oh, eighteen he's got. Bonifacio Mazas and Bulmaro Santiago and Juana Climaco, do you two want to be heard? Ms. Goldberg?
Eighteen, pardon. My staff says it's okay for it to go into REAP, but since there's been an issue raised, if we continue it one day, I'll have them look at it again.
All right, we're going to continue item eighteen one day, and we're now on item nineteen, which I think is also in your--
Okay.
No, nineteen is in Mr. Hernandez's district.
CD one, yeah. So then, yeah, but one day.
Only Spanish? Spanish?
Yeah, go ahead. Wait, hold on, hold on one minute. Where's Alex? Alex, you want to do something useful? Go up there and help these people. They need a translator, and my motion to get translation services is on its way, but we haven't got them yet.
Vine por lo que arreglaron algo de la casa. Que están arreglando, que arreglaron algo pero no estamos conforme con lo que han arreglado.
Hi, my name is Mr. Santiago. I'm here to speak on the status of my house. The house has been fixed, but it hasn't been done in the way that I wanted it.
Lo que hicieron nomás pintaron, no quitaron lo que debían quitar, nomás encima pusieron pintura. Y ahorita nosotros estamos viendo que se está levantando la pintura. Tenían tape y encima del tape le pusieron pintura. Ahorita levantamos el tape, se levanta la pintura.
They painted over the house, but it was superficial, and the paint is already peeling.
En la ventana, en el baño, el catorce cincuenta y cuatro le quitó el agua para abajo del baño del catorce cincuenta y dos. Y ahorita pintaron allá, tiene una semana, y ya está poniendo negro otra vez por el humo.
One of the upstairs apartments is leaking, and even though they painted the rooftop of the lower-level apartment, it's already, the water's already seeping through, and it's turning black.
El que estaba agotando en el baño casi más de dos, tres meses le quitó el baño. Ahora nos llevó el mil de gas, nos llevó bastante. No sé qué debemos hacer en este caso.
And because the bathroom leaks, our gas bill and electric bill is up, and he doesn't understand why that is.
Las ventanas de las cocinas, el señor que vino a arreglar le dijimos que nos faltan ventanas, pero él no nos hizo caso y siguió la ventana sin vidrio.
Our windows have no window panes, and we've asked continuously that they put windows and window panes glass on our windows.
En uno de los cuartos, ya está sumido la tabla. No está plano, ya está sumiendo por ende, y nosotros le dijimos, pero no nos hicieron caso. El piso está quebrado, la tabla, y ahora en tiempo de frío entra bastante aire frío, y no nos hicieron caso.
Our floor is raised, and we've asked that it be fixed so that it's leveled, but that hasn't been done, so when it gets cold, we get air, cold air circulated through to the apartment.
Perhaps we should let, Mr. Hernandez? Mr. Hernandez, this is in your district.
Madam Chairwoman, I'll say a few words in Spanish.
Please do, I think that would be entirely useful.
Bueno, gracias por llegar aquí al Palacio Municipal. Le queríamos avisar que sí se va a poner en el programa de REAP. Noviembre seis fue el inspector Trujillo de la ciudad para verificar que lo que ha hecho el dueño no ha sido permanente, y todavía tiene mucho trabajo que hacer. Así es que ahora esto se va a incluir en el programa, y nomás quería avisarles. Gracias por llegar, y vamos a estar seguros que se hagan las reparaciones.
Es lo mismo del catorce cincuenta y cuatro, porque ya viven en el catorce cincuenta y cuatro.
Ahorita lo que está enfrente de nosotros es catorce cincuenta y dos, catorce cincuenta y cuatro y medio.
Es base lo mío, ¿verdad?
Es lo mismo.
También ella no le ha arreglado nada.
Sí, y es el inspector Trujillo.
Sí, la que fue ayer.
Que está allí.
Es todo?
Es todo.
Muchas gracias.
Madam Chairwoman, members of council--
Puedo hacer otra pregunta?
Okay.
¿Y la renta aquí, si la vamos a enviar más a ella?
No, ahora tienen la oportunidad, cuando está incluido el programa, de enviar la renta al programa hasta que las composuras se hagan.
Y ustedes nos van a avisar cuando más--
Y si quiere, puede hablar con Tony Pérez de mi oficina ahorita, y él le da esa asistencia.
Muchas gracias.
Okay, seguro. Members of council, I just explained to them that we made sure there was an inspector who went out there November sixth prior to it going out to REAP. And we had concerns because the inspector had been on vacation, and September fourteenth was the last time we had a report. And his report came back to us basically stating that it seemed that some of the repairs were superficial and only for purposes of passing inspection, and that about fifty percent of the work had been done. And so the recommendation of the REAP department is to include these units into REAP. And I explained that to my constituents, and I want to commend the REAP department for doing its work and sending the inspector out and giving us that information as current as it is.
Okay, so you are recommending then approval of item nineteen, which is to--
Put it into REAP.
Put it into REAP. And let me formally close the public hearing and thank everybody for coming down. Let's first, Ms. Goldberg, did you want to be heard on this? I have you up here. All right. Open the roll on item nineteen. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, forthwith on that one. And just let me, although I mentioned it in passing, let me point out to you, members of the council, there is a motion in your coming around momentarily to ensure that we have translation services here at every meeting. As was rather forcibly pointed out to us last week, we clearly ought to do this for a very large portion of our population. It will allow a lot more people to participate in government effectively. So that's on its way, I hope. And we're up to the next item.
Item number seven, a request that was left on the desk. Mr. Hernandez now wants to continue that one day. That's number eight.
All right, let's continue item seven until tomorrow, November eighth. And that brings us, I believe, to--
Up to item number thirty-four called special.
How about that?
Hmm. Councilmember Chick.
Ms. Chick, you called item thirty-four special. Could you hit the speaker thing, please? Hit the button, the speaker button.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a quick amendment. This motion, instead of public work, should be sent to Environmental Quality. It was a mistake.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
That seems easy enough. Everybody comfortable with that on item thirty-four? We're going to send it instead to Environmental Quality. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That's approved as amended. Item thirty-five called special by Mr. Padilla. Push the speaker button, please. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Called this item special because there was a few questions on it last week when it was on the council agenda. The CLA was asked to submit a report with recommendations. He has done so, and so I would move approval of the CLA's recommendations on this item.
Okay, so, sorry, I got caught up in bureaucracy here. You ready to go ahead with this? Okay, anybody else? Item thirty-five, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved, which I believe brings us to the closed session.
Yeah, closed sessions. Item number thirty-seven, do you wish to hold those on the desk?
What else have we got?
We have public comment.
Public comment, and actually, I'm advised we need to reconsider item seven, eight, sorry, item eight, Ms. Kawasaki's renewal.
When I asked this morning, Madam Chair, if we needed any additional time--
Well, why don't we just reconsider it first? Open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Okay, now it's back, now.
And apparently, the city clerk would ask us to approve item eight today with a thirty-day extension, so that they could then go through the process of recalendering the actual appointment, and then we could approve the actual appointment.
Mr. Carey, you have anything to add to that?
No, I think the safer part of dealing with a new charter is to extend the interim appointment. The mayor apparently has made the permanent appointment today, and the interim appointment will be in place, and then we'll bring the permanent appointment very quickly through the council, so we have a seamless transition.
Yeah, that was the question I asked earlier. All right, so we need then to approve item eight. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, that's approved. Ms. Kawasaki, we'll have a seamless transition.
Mr. Carey leaves. The mayor can't reconsider that decision, right?
He has not yet sent the formal papers. I suppose he could.
Yeah, until I get the document through my doors, I guess he could reconsider it.
Okay, so you get to be on your toes, Lillian, but--
All right, we'll move that right along. All right, let's hold the, sit tight, guys, we're not done yet. We're gonna, now's going to be the time for public comment on items not on the agenda, and then we will be going into closed session for all those that are still listed on the board up there. So here we go. Mr. Robinson, followed by Wendy.
Madam President, members of council, vote no on proposition thirty-eight and yes on proposition thirty-nine. Thank you.
I already did. All right, Wendy. There's a pillar in the way. I can't see if anyone's coming up. All right, seeing nobody, that closes the public hearing. Oh, are you there? All right, sorry, go ahead.
I'm going to be making a call to the, I guess, inspector's office. I think it's, is it in the Health Department building? Someone spit on me. It's been going on for a while, but someone actually harked and spit in my face. And I did think a little bit more of Los Angeles than that. I actually did. I thought they would be a little bit above that. They took a deep breath, and they spit on me on the corner of Olympic and Meadowbrook. I called and was completely laughed off. And my feeling really is that a lot of people who are in office right now would not be there had it not been for the Rodney King beating, the riot, and the aftermath of Daryl Gates. That's my opinion. I might be wrong, and if I were you, I would ask the public to stop following me around, acting ignorant about me being in the world. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing period, and we're now going to go into executive session, which means that I must ask all of you who are not involved in these particular items to depart. And while you're doing that, we will clear the desk.
Motion to postpone a referral.
Without objection, the motions are posted and referred.
Councilmembers who request to be excused from council attendance. Councilmember Wax requests to be excused on November seventeenth and twenty-first for personal business. A motion is required.
Ms. Zikowski moves. Ms. Walters seconds.
The desk is clear, except for item thirty-seven.
All right, moving right along here. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith on that, please. Next item.
Item number thirty-seven E, Luna Moran versus the City. Request to authorize city attorney to settle for $140,000.
All right, we've just lost another member. Open the roll. Close the roll. Right. Well, okay, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, two noes.
All right, that's approved. Forthwith on that, too, please.
Item number thirty-seven G, Penny versus City. Authorize city attorney to expend $132,500 in settlement of case.
Open the roll. Close the roll. There it is, don't worry, I won't close it till it's open. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Seven ayes, three noes.
That is not approved. All right. No, I'm sorry, we had you out of the room. Do you want to? All right, I think we're gonna, all right, somebody needs to move to, somebody on the no side needs to move to reconsider. If nobody moves to reconsider, we have--
Yeah.
All right, okay. All right, okay, so that will be reconsidered. Open the roll on thirty-seven G. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, three noes.
All right, that's approved. Forthwith on that. And finally, you're correct, it did not record. All right. Wow, but that changes the outcome, so--
But it didn't record.
No, you're quite right, it did not record. Let's, I, look, didn't record, she tried, let's just vote it again. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Seven ayes, four noes.
All right, that's not approved. Somebody changed their vote from an executive session. All right, Ms. Goldberg has moved to continue that until tomorrow. Is there any objection to holding it over till tomorrow? All right, we'll hold on that one till tomorrow, and we'll move to the last one.
Thirty-seven I, Irving versus City. Authorize city attorney to expand $900,000 in settlement of case.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven, excuse me, ten ayes, one noe.
All right, that's approved. Forthwith on that as well. So thirty-seven G, we're going to reconsider tomorrow, and I believe-- Madam President, point of order, on thirty-seven F, I want it to be recorded as a no. I don't know if that changes the--
Thirty-seven F was not considered today. That was continued one day until tomorrow.
It was when I voted no on in closed session and--
No, the--
Thirty-seven E.
Thirty-seven E was Luna.
And you wish to change your vote, how?
I'm a no vote on that.
That would change the outcome?
I'm sorry. That was a no vote in closed session, and I'm sorry. Well, I don't, actually, I don't know who left.
So she, you can do it over, and it'll still be--
All right.
We'll cancel each other out.
Well, all right, so, all right, let's revote on thirty-seven E. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the-- Yeah, we got you as a no. All right, how did that one come out? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, three noes.
All right, that's approved again. Forthwith on that. All right, so G is held over, and the others have been approved, and what's next?
The desk is clear.
Hallelujah. Any adjourning motions? Yes, everybody, please rise for adjourning motions. Ms. Chick.
I'd just like to say today's election day, and for all those who are watching, we encourage them to go to the polls and vote.
Before eight o'clock.
Yes.
No, actually, I have found out how you do that. When your neighbors, no, legally, when your neighbors ask you how to vote on something, you give them your filled-out sample ballot, let them do whatever they choose.
Okay.
Ms. Chick.
Vote often influence votes. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Ruth Penske, who passed away with complications of cancer the morning of October 31st. She leaves her lifelong spouse, Harry Penske, and her daughter, Roberta Lewis, Roberta's husband, Lonnie, and a grandson, Michael Lewis. And I would just like to briefly read colleagues something that was read at the service on Friday by the grandson, who said she was warm and so compassionate, sensitive to people from all walks of-- from all walks of life. My grandma truly appreciated everyone. She befended people in the bank, bankers, tellers, customers, security guards, people in the restaurant, owners, waiters, waitresses, patrons, and busboys. She treated everybody with dignity and respect, whether you were the maître d' at Chazens or the person behind the counter at McDonald's. She would give you her full attention, and if you talked to her, she would without a doubt remember you next time. My grandma taught me about love and tolerance, and I am so grateful for the time I was able to share with you, Grandma, while you were here."
Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd ask that we all adjourn in memory and in honor of David Brower from the Sierra Club, founder who passed away, and was just a remarkable leader on environmental issues. In fact, largely attributed to him is the movement itself. An extraordinary person, without whom we wouldn't have very many important environmental protections today. And on behalf of Mr. Burnson, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Wilfred Wallace, who passed away on November 1st. He's, he was the father of Tom Wallace, the CEO of Granada Hills Community Hospital, survived by his wife, son, and daughter-in-law, along with grandchildren.
I'd like to second that.
Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, members of the council, I have two adjourning motions I'll ask for. First is that we adjourn in the name of Amalia Hernandez. She was the founder of La Ballett for Clodico de México back in 1952, and basically, her troupe became a goodwill ambassador for Mexico throughout the world. I first saw the ballet, and again, its color and its grandeur, at the Shrine Auditorium. And it was just last September when they had a performance at Universal Studios, and took folklore of Mexico, and basically introduced it to the world with her own style. And she passed away at the age of 83 on Saturday, November 4th. The second adjourning motion was kind of a surprise to me. Last Friday, I found out about an Oxy student who was killed on Saturday, October 28th. And, you know, the media was busy covering the fact that we had a police officer shoot an actor because of a toy gun. Here you had a student who was picking up two fellow students because they had too much to drink, and someone came up to him and basically robbed him point-blank. When they reached into the purse, shot her in the head.
Oh.
And Wendy Soltero, basically, was a senior, and she was an art major at Occidental College. She was known as an exceptionally creative, caring person. She was the student newspaper's photo editor and advice columnist. The funeral was held in Dallas on Friday, November 3rd, and on Tuesday, they had a candlelight vigil in her name at Occidental. And I just, again, my reflection when I was finding out about it on Friday, it was like, you know, here are two sides to a story. But a real crime committed by a criminal, heartless crime on a very innocent person.
Do we have all members on that?
Yeah. Anybody else? Mr. Padilla.
Just wanted to co-present on the adjournment from Amalia Hernandez.
Mr. Wax.
Two, first, I'd like the council to adjourn in memory of Rita Edelman, who I've known for a long time and was deeply involved in philanthropic activities, particularly with the motion picture and television home. And she passed in her 90s and leaves her family. And did we adjourn in memory of Richard Vertell, who owned Vertell's Towing?
I don't think so.
And longtime relationship with the city, and I'll give the clerk the pertinent information.
All right, call the roll. Oh, sorry, Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. Wax, on the Richard Vertell adjourning motion, I considered him a personal friend, and basically, what we always talked about is official police garage. He was very much a part of the community and contributed and participated in a lot of community activities, and I'm just shocked to hear this right now.
Thank you. We are adjourned. See you tomorrow at 10:00.